The minute taker, please call the roll.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Okay, next make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 23rd, 2013.
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right now I'll turn over the floor to the mayor for a minute, he has an announcement to make.
Thank you. Received a letter here from the village of Bensonville. June 20th through June 23rd, they have the Vietnam Veterans Memorial called Wall That Heals. They have an opening ceremony on Thursday, June 20th at 10:00 a.m. For those residents who would like to attend, it's June 20th through the 23rd. And I believe it's open 24 hours, or if somebody's on guard there, 24 hours. And it will be at Redmond Park in Bensonville. Thank you.
Now I have a report and recommendation, the adoption of the DuPage County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Mr. Forrest, do you want to run us through that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you may recall in February of 2011, we adopted what was then the current DuPage County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. It's something that they were required to do by FEMA. We also are required to adopt this. And what the plan is, it's more of an outline or a guideline, and it identifies the natural hazards that this area of the country is subjected to. It puts forward an action plan, mitigation strategies, how to deal with certain types of events when they happen. And these events include, you know, tornadoes, the kind of heavy rainstorms that we've had over the last several years. And this year they added power outages as being a natural hazard resulting from these types of events. So periodically the county updates and re-adopts new action plans and mitigation strategies to address these natural hazards. As the plan identifies activities that can be undertaken by public and private sectors to reduce safety hazards, health hazards, and property damage caused by natural hazards. And as Wooddale periodically experiences the effects of flooding and storm and wind damage, it's prudent that we adopt this plan to remain eligible for FEMA mitigation grant funding. The new plan is 241 pages long, which is why I did not attach copies to the agenda for your review. I did do the Evelyn Wood speed reading through that, and the changes in there. The main change is the fact that they added power outages as actually being a natural hazard. So as I said earlier, DuPage County did adopt, this is a new version from the 2011 version that we had adopted. And DuPage County is requiring that the municipalities adopt this prior to July 12th of this year. So, any questions?
Alderman Wesley?
We have a, do we have a, do we have one in place now for this, something like this?
Yes, we do.
So this will replace the one that's in there now, this will be the newer one?
Correct.
So we'll void the other one and this one will be the new one?
This will just take the place of the other, yes. This is just an updated version of the same document.
Okay, so I'll make, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A report and recommendation, adoption of the minimum standards contained in the updated DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, similar scenario here to the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. As you all know, for several years, Wooddale has adopted the DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance, and not only adopted that ordinance, but then we also have our own ordinance, which actually contains some requirements that are stricter than the county's ordinance. I can probably compare this, it's a similar scenario to the fact that we have the City of Wooddale Local Building Code amendments, and yet we also adopted 2012 International Building Code as one of our governing codes. So whichever one of those documents has a stricter requirement, that is what would apply to a particular situation. Again, the new DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance is 199 pages long. And again, I did do the Evelyn Wood speed reading, review of it. And probably 99.9% of the changes in this document are capital letters, underlining parts. They've added a couple of minor changes. They include reference to the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. I did talk with the city engineer concerning the new DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance, because he's been reviewed, he's been involved in more thorough review of that during the municipal engineers' meetings that they have out of DuPage County, and they have gone through this document. And in his opinion, probably the main change is that we have to increase the buffer zone width in the floodplain areas. Currently, our standard, I believe, is 75 feet. We need to increase that to 100 feet. So 100 feet from the edge of the creek and/or the boundary of the 100-year floodplain, that's where the Stormwater Management Ordinance comes into play, which governs what sort of structures can be there, what sort of construction, what sort of uses can be contained in the floodplain.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a question. Has Stormwater looked at this one yet, Stormwater Committee? And does ours oversee the Page County Stormwater Ordinance?
Well, it's like our local building code. It's, we adopt this, this is our local, we're required to enforce at the minimum the DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance. Those are the minimum standards. Yet we are what's known as a full waiver community, which affords Wooddale the luxury of when construction projects come along, we're able to review those in-house. Our city engineer is actually the stormwater engineer, or the stormwater administrator. He's able to sign off on the stormwater management permits. In order for us to maintain our full waiver status, we have to either adopt a resolution or an ordinance agreeing that at the minimum we will enforce the DuPage County ordinance. But one better yet, our local code, our local amendments have contained some stricter requirements than the DuPage County was. So we're in very good shape as far as enforcing this. Has the Stormwater Committee reviewed this yet? I would have to ask them. I am not sure.
May I do a follow-up?
Sure, go ahead.
My follow-up with that question is, since our engineer firm has been involved with attending these meetings out in the Page County, and we have one of our engineer firms that sits on a committee, I would say it ain't that hard, since he's seen ours, and the new one today, that he cannot go through that and highlight the changes in that and advise our Stormwater Committee before it comes back to our council. The reason we put a Stormwater Committee together is to meet the requirement that is required. And for them not to even see this and have us passes tonight while comparing ours with them and letting them know what the changes are, because I'm sure they didn't see the changes either. And, you know, we have a guy that's from Baxton Women that sits there on that committee, those at meetings, and they have the update for this one, and they have our own one. So I would recommend that this gets sent down to the Stormwater Committee for reviews, or is there a deadline that we have to pass this one by?
I'm sorry. Mr. Forrest?
I believe there is a deadline on this, but I don't think it's as tight of a deadline as the Hazards Mitigation Plan. One comment that I would like to make, again, as many of you recall, about a year ago, we adopted what was then the current revised Stormwater Management Ordinance. Between last April and this April, they sent the ordinance back to the codifiers because there were a lot of Scribner's errors, I'm sorry, in the document. And again, in going through that, 99.9% of the changes were capitalizing words that were not capitalized before, underlining words that were not underlined before. They moved a couple of code sections around that are basically identical, but they took them from one section, took them in another one, which means they had to renumber the entire document. Those are basically the changes that were made in the document that we adopted in April of 2012, and the one that the county adopted in April of 2013, that they're requiring we adopt. I have no problem taking it back to Stormwater, but again, I just want to stress that any changes in here are extremely minimal.
I, I'm sorry. Alderman Wesley?
I believe this was discussed at Stormwater meeting before, that this order was going to be changed eventually down the line, and that our engineer firm would get back to them on the changes before it came forward to the city council level. So again, I would ask that this goes back to Stormwater Committee to review and highlight the changes for their awareness situation, that the changes have been made compared to ours and ours. Even though ours oversee the Page County, ours is stronger, I still think having that committee in place should have the entitlement to review this before the council approval. I don't see what the big change is, is, and, you know, it's like, if there's not a deadline here, let's bring it up.
Okay.
I mean, they got till, if he could do it by Wednesday, he's got till Wednesday, I believe they got a meeting, so it ain't that hard to go through it. He's got the next week to put it all together, so if it goes there and then come back to us as a council. If you want passes at council, I have no problem if it goes, I have no problem if it gets approval by, reviewed by the city, by Stormwater,
Right.
and come right to council for approval, which it could, I recommend that we do it that way.
Okay, I'll coordinate that with the city engineer.
Are you making a motion to send it to Stormwater?
I'll make a motion to send it to Stormwater to review it next week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, report and recommendation, 13-V2, 13-Z1, 5 North 012 Wooddale Road, Resubdivision. Mr. Forrest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the attorney for the petitioner is here, and...
Can, before you get, maybe we can save us all some time. I was looking at this, and I happen to have been at the CDC meeting. And so it was denied overwhelmingly, everybody voted against it, so as a council, I don't feel it's... I mean, first we'd have to have a super majority, you know, we're not going to hold a hearing here to completely bypass when it was that unanimous, so I'd make a recommendation that we send it back to the CDC, have them look at this again, and maybe if the petitioner wants to change some things up and put a deal together, I think that we need to send it back there. So... Is that your motion? Yeah, that's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
This is for the... So, what are you sending back? I mean, this is for four houses, correct?
Correct.
For rezoning?
Correct.
I'd like to hear what the attorney has to say on this and see where this is going. I mean, is it coming back to four houses again, or?
Well, that's the reason for sending it back there, for them to maybe work out some deal. Probably less than four houses. Mr. Zubach?
Mr. Chairman, yes, for the record, Marshall Zubach, S-U-B-A-C-H, I'm the attorney for the petitioner. We had made a request to continue, or refer it back to the CDC based upon the comments we heard from the CDC Commission as well as some of the public. We're going to revise the plan, narrow it down to not four lots, be less than four lots, and see if that will approve, get approval from the CDC. So it's our request that it goes back to the CDC. Unfortunately, I have a conflict for the meeting in July, so we're looking to have this before the CDC on August 19th.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to send it back to the CDC. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One no. Alderman Roy Wesley? Report and recommendation, zoning variance hearing, 13-V3, 396 Spruce Road, Moranga Lot Coverage Variation. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The issue here, property owners at 398 Spruce Road in Wooddale, Mr. and Mrs. Moranga filed an application requesting approval of a variation from the 35% maximum lot coverage requirement pursuant to Article 6, Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code. And the purpose of the proposed variation was to allow the construction of an in-ground swimming pool. In 2008, the petitioner has applied for and received a variation to increase the allowable lot coverage from 35% to 36%, in order to accommodate the construction of a two-story sunroom addition. As a condition of approval, the homeowners were required to remove an existing 498-square-foot patio. And then when they put the sunroom on, that variation brought the total lot coverage to the 36% figure. Staff recommended denial of that variation because the standards for variation were not met. Swimming pools were not typical among the 85 homes within Woodside Subdivision. And at the May 20th CDC meeting, the motion was made to recommend to the city council that the requested variation to increase the maximum lot coverage to 40% was denied. So the motion did pass unanimous at CDC.
Any questions on this?
No, I'll make a motion to deny.
Is that your motion? You're making a motion to?
I'll make a motion to deny due to the fact that he's already used up all his lot coverage on that property. Is that what we're doing?
I second that. Any questions?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
The CDC was what, six to zero on that, to approve it?
Seven.
Seven to approve it?
No, deny.
To deny? Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. Mr. Alderman Sizmarski abstained. Motion fails. Items to be considered at future meetings, amendments to Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5.101 of the Municipal Code. That's regarding karaoke, that'll be June 27th. Foreclosure property maintenance, that'll be June or July. Community Park/Town Center Vision Plan will be coming to us for a presentation in July. Lakota Group City Wooddale Wayfinding and Signage Design Project, July or August, and approval for staff for minor zoning variations in August. Do you have a request to put anything else on there? Alderman Jacob?
I'd just make a request that we push up the foreclosure property maintenance as soon as possible, to do that as soon as we can, in June preferably.
Okay. Any other requests?
Can I just ask one question? This karaoke, didn't we have a debate, didn't we have a discussion on this before?
We had a discussion, but we didn't do anything officially.
We did nothing. So are we coming back with the same stuff that was proposed to us, or is it new?
Mr. Forrest?
The Reader's Digest version of what we're going to be bringing forward is to add karaoke to the definition of live music. When you have an establishment that wants to have live music, there's another set of rules that kicks in as far as the type of license that they have.
I'll wait till I see it there. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
I yield my committee to Eugene Wesley.
Call the Meeting of Public Work at Public Health and Safety Committee order. Make the minute taker, the same people are present, items, approval of May 23rd, 2013 minutes. Any motion?
Second.
Corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report and regulation, electric access system for City Hall. Mr. Vesta, you want to take that one?
Sure. Last fiscal year, we came to you with some options for electronic access system for City Hall. Based on three different options that we presented, we went ahead with installing 20 of the main doors, which are all the public access doors, and then access to each main department, and a couple of other spots, including the evidence room, that we thought was the highest priority to get on the electronic access system right away. The type of system we put in right now is expandable. We did that for the mere fact of if there was desire to put it into the rest of the office doors, we would have a system that could handle all the office doors without having to install new door control panels. It would just be to rewire for all the doors. That being said, we're back to you tonight. Through the budget process last year, we put in money to finish the doors, and what this proposal for 42 doors would finish all the remaining doors in the city with an electronic access system. So that's what we're looking to do tonight.
So my question to you, it's a budget item that we put in the budget for this year of $64,000 or whatever, some change?
That's correct.
So that will finish the whole entire City Hall and everything?
That's correct.
That we talked about?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Questions? Frank Lazaro?
Chief, I would imagine that these are battery backed up. In other words, if something happens to our electricity, how do we get into that?
The, they are basically powered over ethernet cable, and the main control boxes that are down by the, in one of the electrical rooms downstairs, those are connected to the backup generator. So if there is any failure in the power, they will still be allowed to be used if the power goes down.
Mr. Jacob?
Chief, just wanted to make sure, have we had any issues with the ones that we have in place?
Short of me picking the wrong day, I put one in for the wrong night one time. We haven't had any problems with it. It's working fine. We had one solenoid that went bad. They replaced it free of charge, and it's been very accurate and trustworthy.
Okay, thank you.
I think it is cost dropped on key replacements or locks on the doors, or lock repairs. So I think it's a good idea for us for security purposes. Eventually, it will be done at the treatment plant once the treatment plant is completed. So I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Deny? Anyone deny? Propose? Motion carries. The only thing that I would ask, that I didn't say the dollar amount, so I would ask that that be put in the meds. So we have to do a, Mayor, do we have to do another roll call on that, or no? I make amendment or motion for $64,500. Does secondary agree?
I agree.
Not to exceed, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Items considered for future meetings, quiet zone on June 27th, quad car replacement in July, whenever in July. Anything else?
Yep. Mr. Sizmarski?
I said, take the quiet zone off until the intersection of Wooddale and Irving is finished. We can't do anything till then. Push it back to July or August.
Well, the intersection won't be done. Well, yeah, we can push it back. You don't have a...
Ending the date of the start of that intersection, do you know?
I don't know when the date is. Jeff?
Well, if we're going to push back discussion, then it wouldn't, the construction wouldn't start until next spring sometime.
There's nothing, okay. I mean, we've discussed it, so there's nothing we can do until we get a different grade.
Mayor, you have a follow-up on that one?
We should get, find out exactly what Dytesca and Bensonville are doing, if we have an update on what they're doing.
Well, that's what I asked for, so.
And basically, we should probably start discussing what would it entail. Even though we're doing Wooddale and Irving Park, we still need to see what our portion's going to be. So if we have the discussion now, we won't be waiting in the next spring.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley's correct. He did request that, and that's part of our presentation plan for the 27th, if we move forward with the presentation.
So, okay, I'll leave it there until...
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Just wish to wish Greg Vesta a happy birthday, so. Oh, okay. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. All right, any other questions? Mr. Jacob?
Are we leaving that on the?
Leave that on there.
We are, okay, thank you.
So, any other items added to the agenda? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, have the minute taker note that same people are here. And like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on May 23rd, 2013. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there a question?
I think on the, I think Alderman Catalano, were you not here? Because it didn't have your name on there. You were here at that meeting, weren't you? I think there just needs to be a correction. Alderman Catalano, I don't think it showed up on there.
Can we make that correction? I'll take her. Okay.
Thank you.
He was here.
He was here.
Yeah. Okay, all approval of the minutes?
Yes, there was a motion made.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, do we have, did somebody second that? Was? I second. Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passed, motion carries. Okay, Rich, I'm going to turn it over to you for a presentation for Clark Mosquito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First on our agenda for Public Works Committee this evening is a report and summary by Clark Mosquito to share with you some of the contents of the program that the city has contracted with Clark Mosquito for. George Ballas is the individual from Clark, that's now our representative from their firm, and he's going to take us through a few slides here, and then open it up certainly for some questions, should you have any.
Thank you for your time this evening. As the regional manager of the Midwest, and also an entomologist with Clark, I oversee the integrated pest management approach in place for the city of Wooddale. The program has several different components. The main focus of the program is the larval control and surveillance component. And you can see here on the screen, these are mosquito larvae. The mosquito larvae actually develops in standing water, and then has three phases in that area and moves over towards an adult mosquito. The main focus of the program is 12 major inspections of over 146 sites, standing water areas, ponds, retention, ponds, detention areas. We take water samples from those areas, collect the mosquito larvae if they're found there, and treat those sites accordingly if breeding is found. If breeding is found, applications can be made either by hand larvicide or backpack larvicide. This is a backpack application right here. Again, focusing on the mosquitoes before they become adults within the village limits. In addition to those applications, applications are made, actually just last month, you would have saw, you would have seen bicycles riding along the streets. Those are applications made to the storm drains, and you're looking at over 3,000 storm drains, almost up to 4,000 storm drains. In those storm drains contains a lot of water. Mosquitoes, again, need this water for breeding. This is one of the most prolific areas for mosquito breeding, and the transmission of West Nile virus, the type of mosquito that transmits West Nile virus, breeds primarily in catch basins and artificial containers. So these are part of the treatment applications, and that occurred actually during the month of May. Adult mosquito control is also performed as part of the program. There is a series of traps which are set on an ongoing basis to collect mosquitoes, to determine the density and distribution. This right here is a grabid trap which collects female mosquitoes. These mosquitoes are collected and actually tested for West Nile virus. West Nile virus was very prolific, as you might remember, last year in the DuPage County area with 56 human cases of West Nile virus. If you extrapolate that number out, for every case that is a hospitalization or a number like 56, you would multiply that times 150 cases to up to 1,000. So you almost had 5,600 cases of West Nile virus in DuPage County alone. Adult mosquito control is performed as part of the contract. There are three citywide treatments which are included in this program, as well as additional treatments which are performed for movies in the park and other festivals throughout the year. So the program as an overall program is a core integrated pest management program, which incorporates a lot of different services. The services start up during the month of May, and two inspections were performed during the month of May. Catch basin applications start at that time, and those... start at that time and those, the trapping and all of that continues on all the way in through September. If you have any questions on-
Any questions? Alderman R. Wesley?
Last week, we had a bill in front of us for, go ahead, Rich, help me out here.
Sure, and George is here to speak to that, but for $9,200 was the bill, that is a five-period bill. We pay that monthly. George can speak to that for further clarification.
It should be corrected.
It's the same cost each month for five months. That's a contract that we signed six years ago with them, and in January 10th of this year, I brought that before council again, and that was reauthorized again. So that payment is, it's effectively a payment plan. So we pay the same amount each month for their service for five months.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
You mentioned about that you checked the water for lava. How often do you check them?
They're checked 12 times during the year. So during the month of May, there were two inspections done during that month.
For each pond?
Yes. So what we do is we, it's retention ponds, detention ponds, all different roadside ditches. There's over 140 sites which are checked on an ongoing basis.
In Wooddale?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alderman.
And the traps that you, that were shown there, do you take those traps back to your lab and test them, or do they go to the county or?
Well, there's two different types of traps that are utilized. There's New Jersey light traps, which are traps that are collected three times per week, collected over an 18-week period. Those are all brought to our laboratory, identified the species, so we can tell what types of mosquitoes are in the area, and also helps us with what is called a brood prediction model, which allows us to determine when adult mosquito control would be utilized. The other traps are actually returned, the grabid traps that you saw there, those mosquitoes are returned to our laboratory. They are tested for West Nile virus. All the results are then actually sent to an independent laboratory beyond ours, and those are actually tested at a Michigan State University, and if they come back positive, all those results are reported back to the county and to the state health department as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Back to Mr. Gillis. The $9,000 payment that we're making monthly, wasn't there another payment that we made too of 2,000? So that was my question last time.
Yeah, and the $2,300 bill that you had a question on Alderman Woods was for treatment of a pond at 480 Montrose, commonly, I think, referred to as the Hiawatha Pond. But there is an algae side that was added to that pond. It was something that had been started a couple of years back, and we continued that trend here this year.
So that's outside of the mosquito-
That's correct. That's a different division of, I hope I mentioned that last time, a different division of their farm.
All right, thank you.
Any other question? Alderman E. Wesley?
I did get a copy of the contract to verify the compensation that we had in that. And I don't know if I could do this or not tonight, but I wanna see if I could do it. Mr. Mayor, we did not say to, we asked to hold that check until we get the information. At the council level, could we release that check as affected tomorrow, knowing that? Well, we will do it tonight.
So it has to go to council then?
But I thought we have done this, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong here, I thought we did this with Maxon Woodman Bill one time. We hold all the bills until the finance chairman or committee member looked at it, and then we released that check. We didn't come back to council with that check.
All right, Jeff.
I remember a process where, in instances where we would have a council meeting canceled, we would send the list of bills to council members and ask them if they had any problems with any items on the list of bills, and if they did, then we would pull that check until that question was answered. As far as the process last week, I really don't remember. I'm not sure.
But we have, we have released it before after the council had the questions answered. Tonight, we had those questions answered. So I don't see why would we hold back their payment then.
The only problem I can think of is I think we amended the approval amount for the list of bills. So with that amount, that didn't include the check. So if we would have left it, the amount, and then said, let's wait on verification, then we probably would have been able to do that, but we amended the number.
Okay. I forgot we amended the motion. That's fine. Well, then, he's gotta wait till Thursday night then, next Thursday.
Mayor, please.
Basically, that's what I was gonna say. A lot of times when we pull a bill, we'll say, we'll pull it with the amendment providing, whether it be legal opinion or whatever, and that's how it would get paid.
Right. Jeff?
Yeah, the one thing, I did have the contract prepared and ready to go in the packet for tomorrow, because I didn't think we were gonna talk contract tonight. I thought it was just gonna be a brief presentation, and then you'll all get a copy of the contract tomorrow in your packet in anticipation for next week's list of bills, so you can review it all, put it back on there, and then issue the check.
Okay. Eugene, Alderman Wesley?
Let's just do a follow-up on this. You have, you already set some traps in our town, am I correct?
That is correct.
And you have done, obviously, you did the bake man or the-
We did the larvicideing treatment in the catch basins as well.
Is there a way that you could send us or send the director an email, what has been done already? Because here's the thing I'm getting. I'm getting, I already calls from people with, you know, it ain't that warm out yet, but I'm getting calls for mosquitoes and I, they ask me, have we done anything yet? It will help as aldermen that, yes, we have done this, done this, and the council will get a copy of that in their email or in their packet saying, we have applied this way and that. And that's all I'm asking for is update. And then the other thing I'm asking is for when you submit your bills, may you update, break it down a little more than contract services? Because when I get contract services, I'm assuming that Joe Smolfer outside gave me a contract and says, here's, I want $2,000 for contract services, and I don't know what you did in that contract service. I know it's part of the contract, no doubt about it. I read the contract, I agree with, but I'd like to know what we've done in that period of time with that contract.
Go ahead, Rich.
You know, just as a follow-up to your comment, you know, I heard you last time. We've had that dialogue. He's agreed to provide me with a report that gives us the detail that, so maybe I can insert that and give you some better clarity, and, you know, I do appreciate the comments.
Okay.
Rich, I have a question for you. How many years has Clark Mosquito been servicing Wooddale?
Since 2006, they began a dialogue with us, and then their actual service came in calendar year 2007.
Okay. And a question for you. Has anything that you've done for the city changed, or is this pretty much a regular routine for you?
Since 2007. Previous to that, we actually worked with the city going back almost 30 years. So the program was changed moving into 2007, so the, in the last six years, it has remained very similar.
So it's remained the same?
Additional sites have been added as different areas have been developed and different waterways have been changed, but from an overall standpoint, the service level where you have different inspections and catch basins, other than just the units have increased, it's remained very similar.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, he's absolutely right. We had them for 30 years, and then we changed one year to vector for mosquitoes because the council says, let's go out for bid. Vector came in with the lowest bid. Vector did a terrible job, so we said, no, we're going back to Clark. There ain't that many contractors out there that does Clark. And fortunate, it was really nice that they stuck, Clark stuck to their contract as they did last year. This contract is almost identical from last year. So I appreciate them not increasing like we did, but I'm very happy with Clark, and I'm sure the citizens are happy with them, so.
Eugene Semaski, I mean, Alderman Semaski.
I changed my name.
Change your name.
Did you, did you say you guys dropped those pellets in every storm drain, or is it every, how many feet or?
It's every storm drain along the public right of way, so it's all, all storm drains, catch basins, inlets, and otherwise.
Okay. And then I want to follow up. Have you guys found any West Nile in the area at all, or?
West Nile virus was actually found in Cook County just last week, but West Nile virus, generally, we start to see positive mosquito samples into June and July, and then human cases into August and September.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, Rich, I wanna go back to the aquatics thing. Do we have an ongoing contract, or is that a one-time expense on that pond?
It's a one-time annual expense.
Mayor?
Rich, is that the ponds that we're developing all the algae, is that the ones, or is that something different? Because I know we had to step in on some ponds that were a mess.
This is a pond that the city currently does not own. However, it's a regional pond that causes a public health and safety nuisance. We have been trying to work with the owner of the pond. It's problematic situation, so we end up treating it and going back and trying to get those monies recouped from the actual owner of the pond, but for public safety, we end up treating the pond.
Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one follow-up question. In the previous years, the contract stay, we had three with an option of number of possible four. Reading this contract and full as me, they didn't catch it when it came to us. It does not say that in his contract. So was that option, was that option taken out by our staff, or was that an option that we just left off there?
The contract from 2010 to 2012, and then the extension for 2013 through 2015, is the, are the exact same terms. So there's three, or citywide adult mosquito control, and then we do have a price for any additional authorized treatments beyond the three.
Okay, that was my concern. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Rich, you mentioned that they treated the ponds only once a year.
They're actually, we actually do inspect it and treat it throughout the year. It's a one-time cost. So it's a program, but there are up to 13 inspections that are included in that pond program.
Are you, are you-
Go ahead, Alderman.
The product that you're using, does it have to be licensed for?
Yes, all, for both mosquito control and the aquatic services, you have to be licensed through the Illinois Department of Agriculture, and in addition to that, in 2011, a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit is necessary for both mosquito control and aquatic services, and both Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, who provides your mosquito control, and Clark Aquatic Services, who provides the aquatic services, both of those we have permits for, and that includes actually additionally, because we do gypsy moth for the city as well, a permit is necessary for that as well, under a different license under the Department of Agriculture as well.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
With the Department of Ag now, there's laws now that you have to say how much chemical you're using and stuff like that. Do we, do we get a list of that of how much product for the city's records?
For the city's records, actually, because we are the permitee holder for all of the municipalities, our permit is for all the work that we provide. So we don't break down chemical use by municipality or usage, because the permit is actually through the I E P A, and the permit is for all chemical use under that single permit. So we do not break out permit, we don't break out chemical use village by village or city by city. So that is not a requirement of the permit. The permit requirement is that all chemical use that is utilized by our company under that permit is reported together. So anything that we do for your pond is reported with all of the other 1,100 ponds that we would treat for mosquito control. Any mosquito control that we provide here is reported under all the contracts that we have with over 175 municipalities here in Chicago. And your report, your monthly report will give you a breakdown, and then the annual report, which we will be providing as well, gives a breakdown of what services have been provided, but for the actual reporting to those agencies, that is done under a large permit format.
Go ahead.
So the Department of Ag allows that to do it that way? I mean, because that's a new thing that I'm talking about.
Yeah. The Department of Agriculture doesn't oversee that. It's actually the I E P A and the I D N R are the agencies that oversee that permitting process, and so they have allowed us, and because we work with so many municipalities on so many things, our reporting process is different than what you might have for an individual home project or things of that sort. So we, we report on a massive basis rather than an individual basis.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Board.
Okay, we have a Stormwater Commission report, and I'll be doing the report. Basically, we had three motions that were made during the Stormwater Management Commission. The motion to amend the current resident flood survey form to include a clear title and instructions for submitting a complete form. That form is now going to be updated with the words important survey form, and we're feeling that the word important should hopefully get some attention where people start filling these forms out and sending them back to the city. Also, a motion requesting a representative from the city staff, either a director or knowledgeable member of the city staff, be in attendance at all Stormwater Management Commission meetings. And Rich is gonna be at the, at the next Stormwater Commission. You have something you'd like to say, Rich?
Just that I've tried to do some outreach before the conversation, had a number of discussions with some of the commission members, certainly read the meeting minutes and gotten, I think, a pretty good handle on what some of their concerns are. That coupled with the NOAA system and moving on that, I think we've got a real opportunity to make some progress. So I look forward to the meeting next Wednesday.
Right, and also, there's been some updating going on with Channel 6. It's not updated yet, but there's been a lot of discussion as to putting in new slides for the Stormwater Commission. Also, a motion to name Steve Kirch as a representative of the Stormwater Management Commission to the Salt Creek Watershed Network. Also, Rich, we've had a lot of dialogue about the city itself becoming a member of the Salt Creek Watershed Network. Have we made any progress on that?
You know, there are two different networks to belong to. I think next Wednesday, I wanna make sure that I understand which one that the group favors, but then, of course, we would consider making sure that we're members of the one that I think the group as a whole would recommend.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much on that. Okay, next, report and recommendation for salt storage consideration. Rich, I'm gonna let you take that.
Mr. Chairman, as you might recall, back in February, we had some dialogue as a group about salt storage issues, and at that time, we had a relatively warm winter on our hands, and we were predicting that the city would end up having an abundance of salt that we were gonna have a need to store. So at that time, we talked about, I believe, six primary options, and just to run through those quickly, we have acquired in the last year or so a commercial street property at 144, and there was an opportunity to look at that property for storage. There were some limitations on that, but we certainly had that as one potential opportunity. A couple other options included expand the existing storage area that is at the 720 facility today and reconstruct that facility or add what I'll call a permanent structure to that. We also talked about adding some sort of temporary storage at that facility at 720. Fourth option was to work with Morton Salt and just have them hold that salt till next year for us at their facility, but with that came a pretty considerable cost. Option five was certainly to work with any other municipalities or government bodies to look for an intergovernmental agreement to potentially store some of the salt. As we learned during that conversation, that's a very difficult challenge, because a lot of other people, if we need to store some, they probably already at their, are at their storage limits. And then the sixth option, and the option that we tried to look at more broadly, was looking at available properties in the city and in adjacent, you know, government entities to try to be able to build a facility that would be more permanent in nature, i.e. a salt dome someplace. So there were, there was some dialogue about, you know, some available properties that we potentially could have built on. I guess in conclusion of this, last year, the winter came much later than we expected, and as such, we used up the salts that we were obligated to take under contract with Morton Salt. And so it has resulted in, you know, a lesser need for at least having to address the storage considerations for this year. So what we have opted to do to resolve the matter for now is we have- So what we have opted to do to resolve the matter for now is we have reduced the number of salt tonnage to 800 tons. Our normal order was 1,000 tons. And you're obligated to take 80% of that 800 tons or up to 120% of that 800 tons. So basically, that gives us a target of a minimum of 60, you know, 640 tons that we're, will be obligated to take. And as such, if we have the similar winter that we had last year, we believe that making that adjustment will accommodate the potential for needing to store some salt. In addition to that, if, if we have a reason to have to store some more salt, we would create temporary storage outside of our existing facility and create a ground storage with a cover on it if we need to. So that is our plan going into next winter. I know on a beautiful day like today, maybe we're not all thinking about snow, but Alderman Eugene Wesley and I had, you know, had a lot of discussion about this and just want to make sure that everyone understands that we've resolved the issue, bring it to closure, and open it up for any discussion on a more permanent facility if you think that's appropriate.
So Rich, which option are you recommending?
It's not a recommendation of options. It's just reminding you that those were the options that we explored. The option that we are concluding with is that we don't have to take any action, or we didn't have to take any action this year. But because we didn't have to take any action, doesn't mean we shouldn't have maybe some discussion about it and a longer-term solution. And I think that's why we're here tonight to talk about it.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I started this project last year, and my concern was the salt. We had had, we did have some conversation out there about the storage. We did agree to move some of the stuff out of one storage bin if we have to. Outside, our dirt and our sand. We made that, we looked at, me, Mr. Gallas and George sat, went out there and we said, okay, if we move this here and we add to this storage, that will add about, Rich, help me out, 250 tons? So we still have room for 250 tons, provided we just moved the salt, I mean, the dirt and the sand out of that one bay and will still be under cover. And I think we, at that options with the discussion that we had, is that we would try that option for next year, knowing that there's unfortunate ITASKA has signed a contract sooner than expected with their salt. We are in negotiations or forming our committee, or those committees have not met with ITASKA yet. And actually, ITASKA paid more money for salt than what we paid. So I think what we should do is go to the option that we talked about, moving some of that dirt out if we have to, add another 250 tons in that one bin that's storage.
So is this option number two that you're talking about Eugene?
Yes, that will be another option. Well, no, because it ain't going to cost us anything right off the bat. It's just moving some dirt out of the one bay. So there's, that option is not on here.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
That option is not on here, but that was what we were discussing. So I think that will be the smartest move. And then once the committee meets with ITASKA, that may be the first topic we talk about, joining salt purchase together and sharing the salt shed that they have. Believe it or not, the salt shed for location, and I have drove through this whole entire city, I don't see a location for a salt shed unless someone wants to put where we had it, at the, behind the firehouse or on the county, behind the county building. And that was up in arms. So my suggestion, new standards with the EPA is coming down the pipe, so that's got to be addressed too. So I would say go with the option that, not here, but option that I explained, move the dirt and the sand out of that one bay, give us 250 more tons to store for at least this year, and then revisit this or talk to ITASKA about down the line.
Yeah, so we're pretty much looking at option five. Seek assistance from other municipalities?
If, if we get down to that.
Yeah, okay.
But until then, I suggest that we move, and the reason why I just came back, as Alderman, I don't have a say-so to tell them what to do. It's a council decision to make. My suggestion was, and working with this, is bring back suggestions, and it's a whole council decision, make the decision. I don't make the decision.
Right.
And that's why I wanted to bring this back onto the dais today, to line it all up, which direction we all want to go. Because you may have a different direction, this guy might have another direction. I'm just laying it out. I don't make that decision. It's a council decision, which direction you want to go. That's the direction that I would recommend go, but you might have a different selection.
Well, I think something has to be done, because you and I, all winter long, were stressing out over what we're going to be doing with all this salt. But fortunately, we did have enough snow. But we don't want to get caught like we did last year.
But we also lower our salt purchase for this year.
Right.
Mike, may I do one follow-up on that? Mr. Gallas, if we go ahead and we burn up through that salt, there is still that option that we still could buy off of Morton at the same price or increase on the price?
Go ahead, Rich.
We could buy 120% of the 800 tons we're obligated to order, right? So you can...
Oh, we went down on our salt orders?
Yeah, we, we reduced it by 200 tons.
So if we go, so if we have a bad winter?
We could buy more.
We could buy more through Morton at the salt rate that we have, or it will be a little increase?
Go ahead, Rich.
You can buy 120% of 800 tons.
Okay. Okay, got it.
960, somewhere around in there. 960. And then you could, after the 960, you'd, you'd have to negotiate.
Right, okay.
Alderman Sermansky?
There's also, I mean, the other option is constructing into one, it's off in the future. But those pictures that I showed you before?
Right.
Bell Grove having that one. You'd also have staff talk to the historical area, build them a shed.
Did you show the pictures to staff? By any chance? Okay.
I sent them to staff.
All right. Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
Just for Mr. Gallas, I know you said we could do 120%, but say we have a real bad storm, we could get more? I mean, it's just going to cost us more and we're never going to have a problem?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe just go up to $105, I'm saying.
Okay. Mayor, please.
Just for Alderman Jacob, a few years ago, when we had all that snow and all the municipalities ran out, I think they almost doubled the price on the salt at all the municipalities back then.
Yeah. So Rich, you don't really need us to make any decision tonight, do you?
Just to you at the request of, you know, council members, to just remind you that, you know, we, we made it work last year. We've made some adjustments to try to make it work this year again. And as Alderman Eugene Wesley has pointed out, you know, we, we're prepared to make that adjustment, should, should it be necessary this winter.
Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I would recommend that this proposal goes in your file drawer right now, for we don't have to retype this back out again if we run in a situation. So long the council's in favor of doing what we thought we decided.
Right, I mean, we obviously need to do something, so we don't get caught.
We'll be ready again if something occurs that we don't have to wait. We could be at...
Right. Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Thank you, Rich. Okay, report and recommendation, proposal from Baxter and Woodman for the pedestrian improvement project in the not-to-exceed amount of $65,000, design services. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Fresh, fresh my memory is, if I'm mistaken, this was part of a grant. Am I correct?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir. This is part of a Surface Transportation Program grant from the DuPage County Mayors and Managers. It's done under their Transportation Control Measure, the T C M program that helps fund pedestrian and bicycle path improvements.
So, hey...
Go ahead.
So the, so this improvements, if I'm mistaken, improvement will be made seven locations along Wooddale Road and one location along Addison Road. So the improvements, if I'm mistaken, are they A D accessible or are they lights or, I mean?
Let me, maybe explain the project a little bit. The improvements are at several different locations on, on Wooddale Road. I can give you the list of them here.
I got them right here.
Okay. And one, one on Addison Road. And what they are is going in and replacing the A D, the sidewalk ramps as they come down to the street to be ADA compliant, any curb work that needs to be done as well. Installing crossing signs that are LED lit and they'll have a pedestrian push button on them. So when someone comes up to make, to cross in the crosswalk, they're going to push a button. The signs will be lit up with LEDs around the side of the light, and they're solar powered too, so they don't draw from the power supply. They actually have their own power with solar power. So those, there's about 50 of those type of signs in the grant, as well as decorative crosswalks in a number of locations, typically one to two per intersection, although at Wooddale and School, there were four decorative crosswalks. And those were intended to be a stamped, a stamped asphalt crosswalk there to heighten the visibility of pedestrians. This project was, started off as sort of a streetscape project that the city couldn't find funding for at the time. And the program through DuPage County allows for pedestrian safety improvements. The, the project has a lot of safety benefits to it. And so we applied for that project under the pedestrian safety component of the Surface Transportation Program. And the county approved its inclusion in their program.
But if...
Go ahead. Go ahead Eugene.
If some of the A D, A D ramps are already in, which we have, some of these streets were done already, and they, we just put them in, will that be part of this, even though we already put them in? It's that red ones, am I correct? I just want to verify that.
Yeah, we'll have to review them and make sure they meet today's current standard. If they do, then they're allowed to stay in. But if they don't, even if they're red and they have the, the raised detectable warnings on them, but they're not built exactly right, we will have to replace them, because these are federal funds. And the project needs to be ADA compliant when it's done. So we do need to verify each of those ramps and make sure they're done correctly, to today, to the current standards.
So we're going, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you.
So we paying 100% of the engineering part and the other part is a 70% grant?
That's correct. And that's per the rules of DuPage County's S T P program.
So then we still have to come up with 30% for this project?
That's correct.
And what was the 30% of this project?
It's approximately...
$65,000?
No, $65,000 is for the design engineering. It's 100% of the design engineering. And then the city's share of construction and construction engineering would be approximately $300,000.
Okay, because I, I don't see that in a memo, on how much our share was.
That, and that would be programmed in a future fiscal year. It would, it's not in the budget for this year. It's just the engineering was put in the budget for this year.
So these aren't being installed this year?
No, sir.
Those are designed?
It's going to be designed this year.
Okay.
And we're going to shoot for a January state bid letting down in Springfield and probably constructed April, May of next year.
Is there a deadline when this has to be completed with the grant?
No, actually, you've got an additional year, but the thought was to try to expedite the project through the county and try to get the improvements built next year was, was the goal.
And Minute Maker, I'd like you to show that Alderman Winger is now in attendance. Okay, also, I have a question. On the list of the sidewalks that you have?
Yes.
It might have been a typo here, but A and I, let's say Wooddale Road at Murray Drive, is that?
It was a typo.
That was a typo.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just, just one intersection.
Right, got you. All right, thank you. Alderman Winger?
So as you're checking each of the listed items for the ones that are completed and if they're under compliance, let's say that four out of them are, I'm going to expect the cost to be much less than the $65,000. Would you agree with that?
Go ahead.
So the design costs would then come down if we didn't have to design a replacement? Yeah, I would think so, sure.
Okay, so, so this is like costed out if you had a design, all items?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Could we, as we discussed before, one of those crosswalks are going to be at Addison Road by Potter. So if we're taking one off the Wooddale Road section, could we then just add another one on, on Potter to hit the other side of the school?
Well, we, it's at the same location, so I think the state wouldn't be okay with that in the county. It's just a question to make sure we can get it done within the budget that we've prescribed. Now, we did a preliminary budget to put the application in. I haven't done any detailed design, I haven't done any design on this job yet at all. But once we get into the design, if we find out there's money available, then we could, we could perhaps go ahead and do that, as long as it's in the same location that was put in the grant application.
Right. Well, I just want to, if we could use the dollars, I would like, I mean, that was one of the locations I would have liked to see more done around Westview. This is something that we talked about at Streetscape and kind of city staff was working on this grant with you guys, and we kind of didn't really get to talk. So I'd like to maximize the benefit we can achieve.
Yes, sir.
From that grant and your, your design work.
You're not tied to a number of crosswalks, just the total dollar amount and, and the approximate location and what we put in the grant application.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
I guess this question is to Jeff. Is Bexman Woodman, I mean, how he was saying is with the county, did we go out for bid on this? Or how did Bexman Woodman come into this?
Rich, Jeff?
Baxter and Woodman works with staff on the DuPage Mayors and Managers Trans-Tech Committee. The Trans-Tech Committee and issues are, you know, categorizes the projects, ranks them on a scale, and then makes recommendations to the full board of D M M C. And then those, those monies get let. Baxter and Woodman helps us on that committee with their engineering expertise. They've been on that committee with us for a number of years now. So they really headed up the grant process together with staff on this project. And being a professional services, just for design, doesn't have to go out for bid. When we do the construction, that's when we would go out for bid for the project.
Well, we have other...
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy.
We have, so it was through Mayors and Managers?
Yeah.
Okay. One more thing here, I was looking through this here, and it says mileage of $180. What, what's with the mileage?
Go ahead.
I'll defer to Mr. House.
I understand hourly, but then you're going to hit us with, I'll give you a bicycle.
Understood. Well, that's just an allotment. If, if we don't need to spend it, we won't need to spend it. We don't typically charge the city mileage for our work over here, so I don't think it'll be a problem.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't put this one together.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a question, how were these locations chosen? Was that something that Streetscape worked on, or is that something?
Yes, I received the locations from city staff, I believe through the Streetscape Committee. That was given to me about, about a year ago in August.
Any other questions? I'd like to do a roll call because of the price, please.
What's the motion?
We did.
What's the motion?
To accept the...
Yeah.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Minute taker, can you repeat the motion, please?
You just made the motion to approve.
No dollar amount?
Yes, $65,000, that's to exceed $65,000.
That's the thing, it wasn't a motion, I just want to make sure the dollar amounts...
Yeah, not to exceed in...
That's fine.
The second? You concur?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sermansky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, see, report and recommendation, consideration of COM Ed converting above-ground cable at the intersection of Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road. Who would like to take the lead on this? Rich?
I'll take the lead, just to introduce the topic while Mr. Hogan prepares here. Several weeks ago, maybe, maybe a month ago, H R Green and, and I had met with COM Ed to discuss the potential for taking above-ground cabling around, along Irving Park and, and Wooddale Road corridor and in converting it to a below-ground electric infrastructure. And tonight, you're going to hear the findings... Uh, and tonight you're going to hear, uh, the findings of that discussion that we had with them and, uh, while we had HR Green here, we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to share just a brief update of where that project stands to date. Uh, so with, uh, with that, I'd like to introduce Dennis Hogan of HR Green to, uh, further the conversation here tonight.
Okay, Dennis?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm the project manager with HR Green overseeing the Illinois 19 at Wooddale Road project. Uh, we're currently working on preliminary plans at this intersection. Uh, as Rich had mentioned, uh, we've met with COMEd in February and then recently in May as part of our scope of work for our design. Uh, the city was interested in at least evaluating the possibility of converting the overhead utilities within the intersection to underground. Um, based on that, we met with COMEd, we had a couple of meetings, we had a, um, a concept plan provided to us as far as, um, at a high level as far as what they envisioned with the project and that's something I'm going to go through with my slide present, presentation. So as far as the project goes, uh, as far as status, like Rich mentioned, we're currently working on our preliminary plans. Uh, we have Parsons Brinkerhoff that's currently under our contract that's doing the railroad improvements and gate improvements. Um, in May, we met with Metra, the ICC and IDOT out on the site to scope the railroad improvements and what would be needed at the intersection from a railroad standpoint. And, um, so we're moving ahead with our design. We're approximately 48% complete with our project as far as percent complete and dollars spent to date. Uh, the plan is to submit pre-final plans to IDOT in December and we're still targeting a spring 2014 letting for construction. The one thing that always comes into play with any project though with IDOT is obvi- obviously the right-of-way acquisition. Um, we have, as of May 1st, we have our right-of-way appraisals and negotiators on board. Uh, they will be beginning the process as far as appraising the land and so on. But the right-of-way is always an issue that you want to expedite and so on, but if the right-of-way is not clear in time for the letting, then the letting gets delayed. But currently we're on track to meet a spring 2014 letting. So the scope of work for the project, for some of you who aren't familiar with it, to lead into the presentation with COMEd, uh, the scope of work of the intersection, and I've got an aerial exhibit that I'll show as far as the actual project, so it's, it would be a little bit helpful to understand what this is. But this is just a bullet point list as far as what the project consists of and it consists of intersection reconstruction, uh, the addition of southbound, eastbound right turn lanes at the intersection, uh, water main is currently being designed as part of the federal and state, uh, funds that are for the design engineering for this project. Uh, realignment of Commercial Street in order to, uh, the current Commercial Street, uh, is going to be converted into a right turn in, right turn out on the east side and the west side is going to be converted or essentially shifted to the north approximately 500 feet. The reason why that's being done is because the barrier median to the north is being extended and so on to prohibit left turn movements and so on near, uh, Commercial Street. Uh, new traffic signals are being installed as part of the improvement, they will be interconnected with the current system along Irving Park Road. They will be, uh, state-of-the-art traffic signals, the controllers will be, so when the gates are down, one of the big sticking points right now is when the gates are down, the northbound to left, left turn movement is prohibited because the signals are all red. Uh, the new traffic signal controllers and so on, when the gates are down, will allow for that northbound to westbound left turn movement, which I know is a concern with the city and the residents as far as the capacity of that intersection. Uh, I already mentioned the railroad signals and gates are being designed by Parsons Brinkerhoff as part of this project. Um, they're currently working aggressively with Metra to, uh, design what they need to for the railroad improvements. And then evaluating bearing overhead utilities, this is something by no means that HR Green or anyone is recommending to do and when we talk about the cost and so on, we're not suggesting the city move ahead on it. The purpose of this is to, uh, at least explore what is involved with bearing utilities and the costs associated with it and let the city and council, uh, make the decision if they want to proceed to the next step with this, so.
Thank you, any questions?
Well, I still have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I still have some slides that I'm going to go through.
All right, go ahead.
Just, just briefly as far as what the utilities, I mean...
Mike, can you, you want to ask some question, Mike?
Okay, the only thing I had a prob, you talk about bearing these lines, we're starting in 2014, how far down the road is the, the state from doing 19, route 19? Would they have to dig up all those utilities again?
No, I think what, excuse me, when I go through the presentation and with COMEd, obviously COMEd, it's a big investment for the city and for COMEd to bury their utilities. The biggest concern with utilities is relocating more than once with a future roadway improvement. So as part of this presentation, there's a section of the intersection that COMEd is recommending for a permanent easement to put their underground utilities so that way in a, in the future, if IDOT or the county does an improvement and they wind and they need the right-of-way, then it's their responsibility for the cost to relocate the utilities. So, um, I'll, I'll be more than happy to answer more questions, I'll just go through here as far as the main, why do people or why do, why do we bury utilities? Primary reasons for burying utilities, uh, reliability, aesthetics and fewer injuries than overhead lines. Um, the major causes for power outages obviously are fallen trees, snow, ice and high winds. One of the biggest obstacles of burying utilities is the cost though. So in general, it's, it's generally 10 to 15 times the amount to bury utilities than stringing them on poles. Uh, in meeting with COMEd, the responsibility to bury utilities is generally a hundred percent the locals' cost. Um, as an option to burying utilities, um, if the city doesn't have the funds available, an option that COMEd has mentioned that sometimes the costs are deflected to the residents. So bottom line is how much extra to pay just to not sit in the dark. So this is essentially the concept plan that COMEd presented to us, I'm going to just, uh, briefly get out of the, uh, presentation, show you the, the file. This is an aerial image of the intersection and essentially what we asked COMEd to do, here's the legend regarding as far as what the lines represent, but starting on the east leg of Irving Park and working towards Wooddale Road, the orange line, if you can see it here, represents the existing overhead lines, okay? Um, so you've got existing overhead line here running parallel to 19 here. Uh, the other major as far as existing overhead line runs north to south on Wooddale Road, you can see on the south leg of Wooddale Road, the orange line here, running down. And essentially what we asked COMEd to do is, and there's another section of line over here on the west leg of 19. So COMEd met with us and they came back with us in May and came up with a plan in green which represents what they would do at a concept level for essentially eliminating the orange line and they came up with the green line. So the green line represents some overhead and then the E is where they would bury the electric, uh, in the back here and then put some overhead in the back alley. Um, but essentially you can see the green line is where they would bury at a concept level what they came up with for where they would put the existing, uh, underground. One thing to note here on Wooddale Road, there's a yellow line here, it's a little hard to see, but it, there's a 10-foot easement here that they're recommending and they, the 10-foot easement would be from the back of the existing right-of-way to the private property to bury their utilities in. And the advantage, like I mentioned before, is the right-of-way is tight along Wooddale. The reason why they would do that is obviously in a future improvement or widening of Wooddale Road, if the county needs right-of-way, they have the easement there with the utilities underground, the county would then be responsible for paying for the relocation of the underground utility. So that's just briefly as far as what COMEd came together as far as a plan and they presented it to Rich and myself. Um, but going back to the cost and the project, they came up again with a planning cost of 2.5 million dollars and the cost does not include the permanent easement, uh, service revision work to businesses or burying any additional utilities that may be attached to COMEd's poles such as phone and cable. So, um, let's see, let me just go through. So the schedule with the, with this plan, because, uh, I already mentioned that our pre-final plans are due December, one of the questions might be, well, what is the turnaround if, if the city did pursue this, how long would it take COMEd to go ahead and do this? We would try to provide them with an advanced set of plans, um, so they could design accordingly, but they need 16 to 18 weeks for their design. Um, there would be an engineering report as far as that they would go and prepare an engineering report. Um, I talk about that in this next slide. The, the, the next step really in this whole process is really to give this pursuit a go or no go, you know, based on the cost and the information I'm presenting to you because to go to the next step with COMEd and have them prepare an engineering report and have another fee to the city to go through that effort, um, it, it's probably not worth it. So I've just presented as far as to you, as far as what information we received from COMEd and it's just open for discussion as far as how the council wants to proceed.
Rich, um, for this 2.5 million, how many feet are we actually talking about burying?
Uh, you know, we haven't done a takeoff to determine how, how much that is, but uh, maybe Dennis can speak to the parameters of the project, so, uh, what the length of Wooddale and what the length of Irving Park would be.
Go ahead.
You know, the, the question was asked because Rich and I both wanted, we asked the question is, how much of that 2.5 million can you put a, a unit price per foot or something for the relocation? And they said at one time they used to do that, but for now they don't normally do that. So just based on the existing overhead within the intersection units, intersection limits and the green lines that I represented to put everything back in order so everything functions properly, you know, with, with the current connect, connections, uh, they, they were reluctant to put a unit price per foot on that. So, um, so unfortunately I can't answer that question. I could certainly take a measurement of the existing overhead and say, hey, you got this much overhead, COMEd came up with 2.5 million, convert it to a unit price per foot, if that would be helpful.
It, it would. How did they come up with the 2.5?
They must, when, you know, with what they have to bury underground, again, it's a, a planning cost and then the, the next step, as I mentioned, because we asked what would be the next question, would be a more detailed engineering report. Um, I was just trying to think if COMEd has these requests from municipalities all the time and they spend this free engineering to kind of look at the concept, come up with the cost and wonder how many municipalities actually proceed forward. So, um, to spend any more effort and to define the cost even closer, I think they're talking about this detailed engineering report to refine those details that you're looking at.
Okay, thanks. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a couple, a couple of questions. So it's 2.5 million dollars, okay? What did COMEd tell you what it would cost for a citizen to pay into this project if we decide burying?
That I...
I just not hearing the memo.
No, I, I, that was a question I was expecting. Um, I asked the, the question, you know, that's, their external affairs department would have to get involved to obtain that information, they said. And then if the city did decide to pass on that cost to residents, they said the city would have to pass an ordinance for this, would, to, this to happen. This would fall under what is known as the rider, LGC, local government compliance.
Okay. I, I have a follow-up.
All right, go ahead.
But, but Jeff wants to add to that one.
Jeff?
Yeah, unofficially I, I did some, uh, I had some discussions with COMEd and, and something of this magnitude in the past, there's been payment plans, we're talking 20, 25 years, um, we're talking cents added on to, uh, residents', uh, utility bills, you know, five cents maybe per month for 25 years, something, uh, to that effect. You know, we're not talking about, you know, getting this done in five years, you know, 500 bucks to everybody's bill. They seem to spread it out over, you know, 20 to 25 years and cents.
I don't know if you know this answer yet, but on that five cents per month, um, can they ever raise that?
Again, I didn't get into great detail with this because we wanted to see if the council was, was interested in proceeding. Uh, I don't have an exact answer on that.
Yeah, okay.
I have a...
Go ahead Eugene.
My, my follow-up with this is, look at 2.5 million dollars, you're looking at adding their engineer costs to put this together because they aren't going to put this together, so you're probably looking at probably, I would say probably 60,000, 70,000 dollars for their engineer, I don't know, but I'm throwing those numbers out because we just approved a 65 mil, 65,000 dollar engineer for a sidewalk. So this is more detail. So we're looking at, my opinion, 2.5 million dollars to delay this project anymore with that construction project that we have delayed, delayed, delayed for several years and these people are looking forward to making that turn lane without a debate. And we talked about this project and, and we need to move forward with this project to delay it 18 more weeks and you, we know how COMEd move on projects. When we lose power in this town, it takes them forever to come back out and put power back up. So my recommendation is at this time, we do not move forward with this at all for 2.5 million dollars and some change.
Alderman Woods?
Couple of questions. So in fact, if we wanted to move forward and say, let me start with number one, do we know what they were requesting for engineering?
They threw out a number of 30,000 for an engineering report and I, I'm anticipating with that engineering report, they talk about as far as the option, as far as, uh, deflecting the cost to residents and like Jeff talked about, the term and the 20 years and so on, they would have a better feeling for that.
All right, so the second thing, in fact, would, if we proceed with this, you know, have them do the engineering, is this going to hold up that intersection improvement for 18 to 20 weeks? Or could this go on simultaneously, you're giving them the engineering for the intersection, knowing that we really want to move forward, if, if nothing else, at least bury what's within the parameters of the intersection study while we wait for the, or the intersection improvement, while we wait for the rest of it?
I tried to, I, I asked the question for the timeframe, if, if the city decided to move forward on this, the same timeframe too, if we somehow got the green light to proceed with this engineering report, how long it would take to do that? They said 10 to 12 weeks. Um, after that, they would then take a minimum of, uh, I believe 18 weeks or so on to do the design for the, for the underground. Uh, what HR Green would do is provide them with an advanced copy of the pre-final plans so they have a copy of our plans, they know where our water main and where our storm sewer obviously is going and so on. So that's the reason why we're doing this early on in the design, to come up with a decision yes or no, because we want to make it work within the timeframe with the roadway improvement and ideally with any roadway improvement, you want the utilities to be out of the way before the roadway contractor gets on site. So if you back into the 18 and 10 weeks and so on, uh, before they even put a shovel in the ground to start the relocation and that's also dependent on storms during the summer where some people get pulled off and that gets delayed and so on as part of their design process. So right now, I feel if this, if we do proceed, the timing would work out, but you want to know early on whether or not you're going to go ahead or not because utilities and so on, they like to have enough time to relocate and design and so on.
So to make this work and to keep the disruption or, uh, expanding this project's timeframe, uh, if, if we get them to move forward, approve the 30,000, they get the engineering, to be able to answer all the questions like Alderman Lazara, Alderman Wesley and everybody has, which we can't answer, uh, today, uh, your feeling is that we can still keep this road project as much as we're able to call it on track, you know, obviously barring, uh, you know, weather... as much as we're able to call it on track, you know, obviously barring, you know, weather and other incidents?
I feel like we could keep the project on track. I mean, with any roadway improvement, you have utility owners working with the roadway contractor as far as the mains of traffic, you know. You like to think that utilities would be relocated before the roadway contractor gets in, but the factor matter, that doesn't happen. Usually, the roadway contractor is dealing with utilities when they want to get out and excavate and so on. But the more lead time we provide for ComEd to design, the better off we would be. Now, this engineering report, you know, I don't think after, you know, do you want to spend $30,000 and then pull the plug and say, "You know what? The costs are refined and so on. We know what we're dealing with." This doesn't include the acquisition of the permanent easement that they want on the south leg of Wooddale Road, which again, once you throw right away into the mix, as far as that's another additional cost. And then how would the residents that would be approached for that 10-foot easement view giving that easement up to ComEd? That's another issue you have to be aware of. The right-of-way acquisition is a long process, so you want to keep that in mind too. So, that's another reason why if we want to move forward, or the city wants to move forward, the earlier the better.
Well, two things, earlier the better. And if we don't do it now, which everybody has wanted to do this, it will not get done. We're not going to go after we do the intersection, replace the water main, come and dig it back up to redo it.
That's right.
I think everybody would have to at least agree with that. So, the big question is today, do we want to take the next step to move forward? I mean, I understand Alderman, Eugene Wesley's concerns of pushing the project, you know, down the road more, and I don't want to do that. But this is something that we've all talked about and all kind of fought for. We've put it in our strategic plan, you know, and we're now at that crossroad, no pun intended, to do something. So, I would say, I think that we at least need to take that next step to be able to answer all those questions and move forward on this. Otherwise, we're just purely not going to do it ever.
Right. That's right.
Matter of fact, I'll make a motion to move forward with whatever it is we need to do to take it to the next step.
Do I have a second on that?
Well, this is what we're going to get. This is the information part of it. Right now, we have a ballpark by ComEd. I do buildings, so ComEd comes to me and they tell me roughly it's going to be $3,500 for us to engineer what you want to, you know, for my stuff, it's a lot smaller. $3,500 to engineer it. Well, when I get the, finally, they, I tell them to engineer it, I give them $3,500. They wind up giving me $1,200 back and only cost $2,500 to do the job or to engineer the job. But unfortunately, that's the way they work. So, we're not going to know those hard answers until we put some skin in the game because obviously they don't want to engineer this whole project for, you know, us to go, "Okay, well, that was nice. Thanks for all the hard work," like you had nothing else to do. But we're not going to do it, so.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. So, I totally agree that if we don't do it now and really put the focus on it, we probably never will. This has been on topic for at least 10 years of kind of on the back burner and thinking about it every now and then, and then we don't do anything with it. So, now is the time. If we're going to do something with the power lines, let's get it in motion. We have signage plans, Welcome of Wooddale and Prairie Designs, but you can't do that and create the image that we're looking for and have power lines overhead. It gives a whole different feel with the power lines. So, by opening up the area, removing the power lines, I do believe that will be a very large improvement to the aesthetics and to our community and then also to help with power outages and such. So, one thing though, all too often, we do spend the money and for the engineering process and then we decide not to do anything with the whole notion. So, I believe the pivotal point of this is, how are we going to pay for it? It sounds like. How is the billing going to work? Can ComEd stretch it out over 25 years? To get some of the details, is that possible to get within the next week to city council so we can make a decision? Do we move forward with engineering or not? Do we know what the bottom line is to the residents? If it's over 25 years, then it might be a minimal impact to the residents, but a much larger improvement overall to the community and to the service to the residents regarding electricity. So, how quickly can we get the impact, financial impact to the residents regarding how we're going to pay it?
All right, Dennis.
Well, the gentleman we've been meeting with, with ComEd has been very responsive. He's returned emails, phone calls and so on. I know he's probably got a lot on his plate. He indicates that he would have to check with his external affairs department. Maybe he'd be able to kind of share that information before, you know, going into a detailed engineering report. I can certainly follow up with him and see that the city is somewhat interested in moving forward, but they're interested to see what the cost would be if it was deflected to the residents based on that $2.5 million planning cost and the term and so on.
Yeah, the other thing that I would like to see is, for $2.5 million, what are we getting? You know, I mean, how many feet are we burying? You know, I mean, there's just so many unanswered questions. We have this $2.5 million in front of us. I like the idea. I don't like the money. So, before I say yes, I sure would like to see if they could give us a breakdown on what we're getting for our money. Go ahead, Dennis.
And I believe the engineering report will refine that. Like I said, I think they're reluctant to come to a unit price for converting overhead to buried, but I can certainly measure the overhead and come up with my own unit price. That $2.5 million, obviously being a planning cost, has some contingency in it, you know, to try and, you know, because it is early on in the process, the engineering process. But, you know, from a reliability standpoint and aesthetics, I understand why municipalities bury utilities. It's more pleasing. In Europe, a lot of utilities are buried because they view overhead poles as visual pollution. So, you know, the 19 and Wooddale intersection is heavily traveled and almost like the gateway into Wooddale. But at what point, you look at burying utilities at that intersection, at what point do you look at burying utilities throughout the city, you know? Why this intersection? Maybe this intersection is the gateway of Wooddale. Makes sense to check it, you know, do it, you know? So, that's, I will certainly follow up with Gary Zach at ComEd and see what he can provide to me as far as what that $2.5 million, if it was deflected to the residents, what the rate would be and term and so on.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Thank you. Couple of questions. Number one, when we talk about power outages, I mean, this intersection, and maybe Rich would have to answer this, how many power outages are happening because of this intersection?
It would be difficult for me to determine that because we don't keep records of that information. ComEd potentially could give us that information should we be able to, you know, work with them on this. But I couldn't, I couldn't offer that information to you because we don't, we don't keep that data.
Go ahead, Jeff.
With a little bit more institutional knowledge than Mr. Gallus, just off the top of my head, we don't have the records, but I don't think the main power lines that we're talking about burying are a lot of the problems associated with the area. They've improved upon installing some new infrastructure like trip savers, things like that for those resident, behind residential homes, those lines. They're the ones that typically will get, you know, hit by trees and, you know, Ward 1, Ward 4, those are problematic. So, as far as outages, I think a lot of times it's those outages are caused by the residential areas and they kind of travel throughout the system. But again, like Mr. Gallus said, it's, we're not ComEd experts, so it could help if we buried them.
Go ahead, Alderman.
I have a couple more questions. Number two, you're saying preliminary estimate is $2.5 million, but there's a lot of things that does not include. Do we have an estimate of, with everything that is not included in that number?
Dennis?
I had a slide as far as with the cost. It's, these are some items that ComEd brought to our attention at our meeting, the permanent easement we talked about, service revision work, burying additional utilities attached to ComEd's poles such as phone and cable. There could be, you know, as far as a common trench, whatever's attached to the poles now when they bury, whether it be Comcast or whatever cable company or AT&amp;T, use a common trench to bury those utilities. But there could be a fee or whatever for those utilities to have with the city too. So, I don't know enough about, until we go into the next step, because I started asking those questions of Gary Zach, you know, if they're attached to their poles and they're leasing to be part on their poles. But he did say that it would make sense, obviously, to be in a common trench when you go from overhead to underground.
But I mean, at this point, you can't say it's going to be another million dollars, another couple hundred thousand?
I can't really estimate that. I can tell you that the bulk of the cost obviously is the electric, you know, the cable and phone probably isn't as a big ticket price as much as electric. But, you know, those details, we're going to be coordinating with the other utility companies as part of our intersection improvement. And those questions can certainly be asked. We have a list of those utility owners now. We can follow up with them and say, "Hey, if you're currently attached to ComEd and they go underground, what would you charge?" They may have a linear foot unit price, so we could quantify what that cost would be.
And then my final question is, when you were showing that map, if you could put the map up with the drawing with the green lines?
Sure.
I guess my question was, when you were describing it, it seemed like they were going to bury it in certain spots, but then it'd be like 100 feet underground, then it's going to be above ground? Did I misunderstand you or?
No, you understood me correctly. The majority of the lines in green with the E symbol is, and it's difficult on the screen with the lighting to see, but there is a section of line that you've got existing overhead here and they have some underground here, but then they go back to overhead here. And the concern when we first met with them was, "Well, you're just moving the line from one area to someone else's problem to see," you know, which was a concern. So, that was the only section of line that I recall that went from overhead here to overhead along here. But I think maybe they did that to try and minimize the overall cost, you know? I mean, because again, the more you bury, the more it's going to cost. But again, it's so, to know where all the connections and everything involved with ComEd's system, they had a, they spent some time putting together a concept and tried to figure out where would we stop the improvement? What do we need to tie in service-wise and so on? And this is what they gave to us at, you know, at our last meeting.
Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Let's do a follow-up here. So, now, like he said, so what we're doing is burying some of it, but then some of it's overhead. My other question is, as council members sitting up here, are we going to do all of Irving Park Road then? You might well get a price tag for the whole entire Irving Park Road from borderline to borderline because our border, if you're looking at the signs that was discussed, there's a borderline on, by the Dunkin' Donuts, you might well look at it all then. And that does this intersection. The other thing that costs is here is, if I am mistaken, you also said there's an easement that they are going to request. Now, is that on private property or is that on the city property?
Private, the prop.
So, my question is, here's the other two pole. Okay.
Go ahead, Dennis.
It's the south leg of Wooddale from the corner here. There's a, it's hard, the yellow line, 10-foot easement is what they're recommending along Wooddale Road because it's, the right-of-way is currently tight to begin with. And again, there may be space currently to put under the sidewalk, but they don't want to put and invest putting under a sidewalk and then later on, DuPage County comes down and does an improvement. More and more easements are being purchased by ComEd adjacent to IDOT right-of-way, so that way down the road. If IDOT does an improvement, they don't have to pay for it. It's IDOT's responsibility to pay for the relocation.
As a follow-up to that question now, my question is, is that business going to agree with the easement? So, we don't know that. So, we're going, go ahead and put $30,000 off for engineering and we don't know if that business is even going to agree with it. And then we not looking at, we only look at that intersection. Well, you might well just have a ComEd come down and give us the whole price for the whole entire Irving Park Road. The other question I have on this project is, believe me, I want to bury those cables as much as everyone else does on this council, but don't piecemeal this together. If you're going to do it, you do the whole entire Irving Park Road and find the money to do it and not piecemeal this together because I know what's going to happen. We're going to do this and Mr. Woods brought it very up, and I believe Christine brought it up too, that we've been talking about this for 10 years, okay? That's a whole entire Irving Park Road. Now, we going to do this and then 10 more years down the line, we go to, well, now we aren't going to do the other part of it? Do it all at once? Bite the bullet. If you choose to go that route, do it all. My concern is still delaying this project. If ComEd delays anything with this project. And my other question is, do they have to go back to the state and get a clearance to bury those? It's a state road which we had due to permits to do our intersection study left and right. Do they have to get state approval to bury these cables?
If the city wants to pay to bury it, IDOT wouldn't care, IDOT shouldn't really care.
But we don't know that for sure.
Well, the main thing is that they're not in conflict with the proposed state improvement. So, as a designer of a roadway project, we have utility coordination meetings. We try to avoid utilities when possible because we don't want them to relocate if we can do a design modification with our drainage design and so on to avoid them. Avoidance is always the first goal. Now, the fact that you're going from overhead to underground, it's a request to the city, IDOT frankly wouldn't really care. They would make sure that the schedule-wise with the contractor, they would be concerned about that because, you know, they have through their design a 90-day relocation law where ideally, when they get plans, they want them to be relocated within 90 days because they don't want delays during construction.
And that is my concern with ComEd. That is my main concern. And my main concern too is, we talked about doing this for 10, 15 years, but we brought the point, we buried this intersection. Well, you better look at all Irving Park Road because that is our corridor. And you might want to look at Wooddale Road too, burying everything on Wooddale Road too if there's overheads there. So, you might well bury the whole city if that's the case. Bite the bullet and do it then.
Dennis, I don't know if anyone knows this question, but is there any grant money for something like this?
The grant money hasn't really, I can talk to see if there's grant money available. I would suspect that with the grant money for this project that it would not be eligible, but I don't want to say for sure. I can explore that as an option. I'm sure if it was an option, a lot of municipalities would be doing that. I know for a fact, I worked on a project up in Lake Forest, Lincolnshire area, Bannock Burn, you know, there are municipalities that invest to bury utilities. Whether or not they pay that themselves or deflect the cost to residents, I don't know. But municipalities in the Chicago area do spend it, money to do it, you know, whether it's to, for reliability, to avoid power outages, or I would guess the Lake Forest and Bannock Burn area primarily do it because they view overhead utilities as visual pollution. They just don't want to see them.
Right. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, Dennis, could you back out of that a little bit just so we can see what the, I want to see where those green lines start and stop, I guess is what we're looking at. So...
The area that you discussed with them, is that?
So, the intersection improvements end right here just east of Oak Avenue. So, however their system is with this overhead line, they kind of with this exhibit showed that this would be gone and then it would tie in here, I guess it's a, the green line here would be overhead and then underground in the back and then back to overhead here. here would be overhead, and then underground in the back, and then back to overhead here.
Right. Well, the overhead's because they already have poles and overhead going there, so they're going to add. Otherwise, we'd have to go to that and take that pole down too, which really isn't our mission, otherwise we could get carried away. So, our goal is Irving Park and Wooddale Road, so that would still be acceptable because those poles are already existing. They're just going to add a couple wires to them.
Okay.
How far going east?
Well, it's pretty much with this exhibit, I think this is where it kind of terminates as far as the overhead. With, see, the intersection improvement, the idea here, because you can go all the way along Irving Park, the idea when we met with ComEd was to limit burying overhead utilities within our roadway reconstruction limits. And our roadway reconstruction limits essentially end just east of Oak Avenue. So, since we have this line here, they would say they would get rid of that, and then they would start introducing the green underground. The main thing I see as far as overhead is along Wooddale Road, that you have north-south, this line here that runs up here, you know, up towards Commercial Street here. They would go ahead and bury that. And then you have a section of overhead right here on the north side of Irving Park that they would bury and then put the underground electric. Again, here, they're recommending a 10-foot easement from these properties here to put the underground electric.
And that's in the back along the railroad?
Right.
Okay.
Alderman Zermansky?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Eugene and Alderman Woods. If you can go back to that one frame that you had, the picture of the intersection, the cross tracks, and just, you know, right now, we're spending money on the facade projects. We're spending money on signage, as Alderman Winger said also. You know, I say, I say I'm in favor, seconding Alderman Woods's motion to move forward on it, but not the whole Irving Park Road yet.
Do we need a motion for this?
You still have, you still have IDOT coming through to do Irving Park reconstruction further down, that we can work on something later at a later date, but to get this intersection done, and, you know, everybody's looking to make Irving Park Road look better, more aesthetically pleasing to the eye, Wooddale and Irving, that you're doing the facade project on front and Irving, right?
So, Rich, let me clarify this. You're looking for a recommendation from council to go ahead and do the engineering for this? No, I mean, as far as a recommendation for HR?
I guess what we were seeking tonight was guidance from this council on whether or not we wanted to proceed. So, the natural next step would be to spend the $30,000 on doing some further engineering assessment to determine some more details for you about what the project consists of. So, I think, and I'll defer to Mayor here, but I think we were looking for that motion to, you know, give us guidance on what you wanted to do next.
So, the motion would be to spend the $30,000 for the engineering? Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Two questions. Do we know that the $30,000 is the number for this engineering from ComEd?
Well, again, I'm going to follow up with Gary, but again, that was one of my questions. I said that, what, to Gary, what would be the fee for this engineering report? He responds, I would think it would be in the area of $30,000.
Go ahead.
You know, when it comes to studies, I'm not a big fan of doing the study and then back off. In this case, I mean, I think in a few weeks here, we're going to talk about the community park, town center vision plan, and this is part of it. And from, you know, Alderman Woods is saying, this is the time this section is being done. You know, what is going to be the cost to the residents? If you start telling me it's $20, $30 a month to the residents, I'm going to have a problem with that. Then I hear a nickel, you know, five cents. I don't want to...
Was that a question?
No, no, I'm, they're talking.
Oh, okay.
So, then I hear five cents, maybe 10 cents, it's a, you know, 60 cents to a dollar twenty a year. I mean, if that was the case, you know, I don't mind that. I'll buy two less cans of pop for the year and we're good, but we need, we need to find out for sure. And I guess the only way we're going to do that is to do the study. I think, you know, if we're going to do it, now's the time to do it. I'm with Eugene over there. We should do the whole thing, but unfortunately, you know, that's a monster project. This is right in front of us. We should tackle what's right in front of us.
Okay, I'd like just a couple more questions, and then we're going to take a vote. Alderman Woods?
Just a follow-up. What the mayor said is, we have all these projects going. This is the logical thing to do, why we're doing that. I'd like to, trust me, I'd like to do all of Irving Park Road too and Wooddale Road. But we do have Irving Park Road being redone in not-too-distant future. We have the water main improvement that we have to do. That's tying into, you know, Thorndale thing, the vision plan, all these things are tied to each other. I mean, we need to get this information to make a definitive decision of what we're going to do, which really affects all these other things that we have going on. I mean, so, it's really imperative that we get the information to be able to answer these questions and make the decision. If not, forever, we're going to be going, you know, we should have done it, we should have done it, just like we should have teamed up with ITASKA to do a treatment plant with them, you know. We're always, you know, have the hindsight. This is the time to look forward and move on this. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Again, I'm not trying to beat this thing in the ground not to do it, but I want this council to know, I will be coming back here again, that we pursued for this project, we better start thinking the whole entire Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road, because I don't care how you look at it, because when Thorndale comes on board, don't tell me that ain't going to be part of our authority coming off down, off of Thorndale Avenue there. And I'm just saying, I want this council to be able to commit to the, down the line for the whole entire Irving Park Road, because that's really going to look borderline to borderline.
I think, one of the problems to commit to it, and one of the things that I'm having a struggle with is the fact that we need these easements. If the owners of these properties don't give us the easement, then our project is dead. And then we've got, you know, 30 grand that we just spent money on. I don't know, is there any way that we can survey some of these people and find out if they would be willing to do this? Dennis?
The easement, I think I heard Mike talk about, where's the easement? The easement again is along Wooddale Road, all the way down to essentially Potter, where our reconstruction limits are. So, all these residents or property owners here, if they would be open to the idea of ComEd acquiring a 10-foot easement from them.
Can we do a survey on that? You know, to see if these, at least, property owners would be on board of that?
I mean, I think we could do that, but I think normally the process would be, if you want to move forward with it, we would start that process after you committed to that.
Well, I mean, I want to move forward on it, but then if we say yes, let's move forward on it, and we've got five property owners that say, no, you're not going to get my easement, then where are we at?
I think you'd run that risk, whether you'd do it now or you'd do it later. And they could tell, someone could say, fine now, but change your mind later as well. So, that's a difficult thing to pin down with any certainty at this point.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
A couple quick questions. Number one, as far as the reliability, let's say we do bury the lines and that's what we decide to do down the road, and there is a power outage and they determine it's underground, how easy is it to find that problem?
Go ahead, Rich.
Work with an electric utility, you may or may not know that, it doesn't make a difference. You attach to two ends and you determine where the fault is, and there's devices that they use to find the fault in the cable. Cable tends to not be a problem underground for a very, very long time. There is no susceptibility to trees or anything like the picture showed. I mean, I think Dennis and I captured the essence of that in that picture. That's why you have outages nine times out of 10, because something's fallen on an above-ground cable.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
It's not just one person that doesn't, you could just have one person that could say, no, no easement, and you're done. I don't think we have the authority of saying quick take either on a project like this either.
All right, I agree. I think...
I mean, you know, by the time you do the project, the house might be sold and the new people will say, nope. So, I mean, even if you did a survey today...
Well, right, like they said, if somebody says yes, and then like you said, somebody moves, then where are we?
I mean, look at 53, they did an easement down 53.
Yeah.
And then they had a, state had to come up with more money to buy property, so...
Alderman Winger?
How did Addison bury their lines on Lake Street? Because it was similar, correct, that they had the lines and they buried them. So, how did they get their easements? You know, do we know? I don't know how we know.
I believe before that, when I talked to them over there, is the old mayor, well, he says what happened is they got the easement clearance before they even moved forward, everything. That's how they got the...
Well, maybe someone can find out how Addison got all the clearances from the easements. You know, I mean, I'm just having trouble spending the $30,000 and then having this thing shelved again because we have property owners that won't give us the easement. Go ahead, Jeff.
If Dennis and HR agree, need to proceed to keep this project on track, you know, within the next couple of weeks, I can assure you, whatever easements we're going to need to acquire, any assurances ahead of time, you're looking at a lot of time. Because you're going to get attorneys involved, you're going to get, it's, you're going to delay the project getting all those assurances ahead of time. I guarantee you that.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, the attorneys would be more than $30,000. I tried to answer the question. I understand your concern, but we asked them to do this. This was our idea, our plan, and this is the next logical progressive step in that plan. We need to take it. Obviously, we have to address those issues. Going back to Addison, if they got them before or if they got them after, they sold the value in the project. Everybody saw the value in the project and improving the community. I think that that's all, what we're up here for. That combined with the Euler Plan, doing the parks, doing a creek walk, or all the other things we're doing, I mean, we could come up with all the same reasons not to do anything. I could sit here and come up with 1,000 reasons not to move forward on anything that we want to do.
Yeah, that's true.
Our goal is to come up with reasons to move forward and keep it moving forward like we are doing. So, and for that, I renew the motion to move forward and get the answers to our question and...
Is there a second on that?
I second it.
Mike seconded it.
Mike seconded it?
They're ready.
You want to do a roll call on this?
Other question?
Call a question.
Go ahead, Eugene.
I just want to verify the motion. The motion is to proceed with $30,000 for the engineer costs. Is that the motion?
Correct.
Okay, but what if it comes in $35,000?
Jeff?
I don't know if I'd lock into a number with that.
We don't have a dollar amount.
I'd give a general consensus to move forward with the next phase, give some latitude on the dollars. I mean, if you lock yourself in, then we're just going to stall ourselves, so...
Go ahead, Rich.
Just a comment. I think Dennis and I would work to get ComEd's final proposal to us. Certainly over 10,000, I would bring that to committee for your approval. So, I think I'm just looking, maybe to make this a little easier, looking for the guidance to get that proposal, and then I bring the proposal in here and you would authorize that.
So, then I would ask the motion or to change that motion?
Well, amend the motion to give you, to move forward and get that estimate of whatever their costs are. So, I'm asking for it.
Is the second or, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
For expediency, I don't think we're going to bring it back to committee. When we get numbers, if we get them, we'll just bring them to council and then we can decide then, because we have to keep this moving forward quickly.
All right, can we, can we do a roll call on if we're going to move forward with this recommendation? Did you have someone?
Other question?
What's that? Go ahead, Alderman.
End of the questions.
Okay, then let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Did I just get a clarification on the motion? Do we have a?
Directing staff to get the dollar amount, ascertain what the actual dollar amount's going to be.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, moving along. We have a report and recommendation, pay request, partial number 13 to Maxim Construction Corp. for the north of WWTP upgrades, Phase 1A project, and the not-to-exceed amount of $521,648.48.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
No? That passes? And let's see, number 10, report and recommendation, pay request, partial number one to Schroder Asphalt Services for Royal Oaks subdivision improvement project, and the not-to-exceed amount of $229,252.58. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please? Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions? You know, before we make, I just want to say something about this project. So far, everyone seems to be really happy with the way that this project is going. When I mean everyone, I mean the residents of Royal Oaks subdivision. So, as far as I'm concerned, Schroder Asphalt Services right now, you're really doing a good job. So, I'd like to have a roll call on this, please.
Did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was a question? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I just want, I was out there today, I think they are doing a good job. The only thing I want to do is, I know is, we contracted someone to take the samples out of that detention basin today, to make sure we did. In behalf of the city, I would like to thank the fire department, providing the boat that's saved us. I contacted the fire department to provide a boat to get those samples, or else our bill would have been higher of them running a boat. So, I want to make sure, we sent, staff sends a letter to the fire district, thanking them for the use of the boat to go out there and get samples at detention basin. Mr. Timmy Ruka, the chief, agreed to that.
I agree with that. Thank you, Eugene. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. And items to be considered at future meetings, the Emerald Ash Bore, June-July, property maintenance on city-owned property, June 27th. You have a question, Alderman Jacob?
I'd like to add something. There's a retention pond on Potter that's right between the Justimatic and the Townhouses. I'd like to look at the options or what we can do to clean that up, what we need to do to clean that up. That pond looks very bad.
Rich, can we put that down? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Eugene, I'm sorry, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The Amber Ash, is that why we're going around marking all the ash trees with white markers, that those are all coming down by Georgetown?
Go ahead, Rich.
We're just marking trees that have been brought to our attention from residents, yes.
Because I know it's in Georgetown area over there, it's like heavy ash trees marked around Georgetown Square.
Ones that are intended or dead, they're being, should be the ones that are being marked, yes.
Are we doing that citywide?
We're doing that where we encounter dead ash trees, yes.
Alderman Woods?
On the same, similar subject. On the same, similar subject, on, on, on the trees, especially in Georgetown. I know last year, I think, I'm sure it was them that did it, it wasn't the city, but they cut down like fifteen trees, just along Potter alone. Do you know, or could we enter a conversation with them to see if they plan to replant some trees? I mean, it's starting to, I hate to see them, you know, cut those and then cut another thirteen, and next, you know, that, it really changes the look of the whole neighborhood. If they have any plans to plant new trees, and also, would the city entertain a co-op program to help them plant trees, or if we could get some in the parkway or something else to help replace those trees lost?
Go ahead, Rich.
I, I appreciate the very specific question. What I think we're attempting to do by this conversation we plan at, at the next committee is to talk about a global policy in practice, and I would like to try to see if we couldn't maybe use examples like the one you just mentioned as an opportunity for us to all here have dialogue about this topic. Because there are a lot of other types of situations as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll make a motion to.
No, 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 no.
Go ahead. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Rich, your report's going to talk about, for this MRS board, all the trees of, not all the ash trees to take down, but a large amount, I take it.
What we're attempting to do is take an inventory citywide and talk about a policy that would address the remaining Emerald Ash, or the remaining ash trees in the city. Some of them are infested and have some early signs of degradation, and there are others that are dead, for example. I want to look at that entire ash population and try to make a recommendation to, to this committee and get your feedback in terms of what action you'd like us to take citywide in terms of the infestation. But yes, it'll focus on ash trees.
Okay. Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
One follow up on the ash tree, are you telling us now that we have Amber Ash in our community? Is that what I'm hearing?
I understand it. But have we, have we detected that it is in our community?
Yes, sir.
Keep in mind, there is standards with removing Amber Ash trees that we have to follow. If they are infesting our tree, there's quarantine the wood, and all that has to be followed.
All right, Rich, do you know about what Alderman Eugene Wesley is referring to?
Yes, there's.
Okay, so you're taking care of that?
Yes, of course.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.